Knox County School Board Meeting. We have all nine board members present, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. And we will begin tonight with a silence, a moment of silence and pledge to allegiance, led by Mrs. Horn.
Flag. So what is pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we just have one announcement this evening, and it's just a reminder that our PTA Clothing Center will host an open house for business and community partners on Friday, July 14th, from 9 till 2:00. The Clothing Center is located at 1,000 North Central Avenue in the Knox County Central Building, and it serves approximately 2,000 students annually, with over 55,000 articles of clothing donated. If your schedule allows, please stop by and tour the center to see how this facility serves the students of Knox County. The two officials that we see in the audience tonight are Commissioner Dave Wright and Commissioner Evelyn Gill. Thank you for being here. Are there any other elected officials? Okay? If not, some changes to the agenda. Board members, after the discussion on Monday's work session and without objection, I'm going to ask that Item 11D regarding our school day schedule during the August 21st solar eclipse be withdrawn. Our Board Policy A141 gives Superintendent Thomas the authority to close schools in the event of inclement weather events and other emergencies, so no board action on this item is required. Although I do want to thank you and think our discussion the other night was very productive and hopefully very helpful to Superintendent Thomas. So, that was a good thing. Also, I just wanted to note that the attachments to Items 7C1 and 7C2 were updated following our work session, and the full documents with all signatures can be assessed electronically. Are any further changes requested? If not, may I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. We have a very special recognition tonight of Becky Thomas. I am very honored to provide introduction for our special recognitions this evening. First, we will take a few moments to view a very special video produced by the Country Music Association in connection with their event honoring the 2017 Music Teachers of Excellence. During that event, country music star and former Central High School student Kelsey Ballerini reconnected with her music teacher, Ms. Becky Thomas. This very powerful video describes the huge impact that teachers have on their students' lives, especially in the arts, so let's watch.
I can't remember a time when I didn't want to be a teacher. It's really the only thing I ever wanted to do. Music is the great communicator beyond words. It's a language, and the only tool that you need to use it is an open heart. There is potential in every student, the potential to realize that their dreams are within their grasp. Sometimes they just need encouragement to get there, and that's why I teach. My name is Becky Thomas, and I was a public school music educator for over 40 years, 30 years, as the choir director and musical theater teacher at Central High School in Knoxville, Tennessee. My teaching philosophy was to give as much as possible of myself, and in return, I expected my students to do so with their music. Some of the challenges that I faced as a music educator had to do with funding, scheduling, maybe sometimes the lack of validation of a music class and what the music curriculum stood for. I overcame those issues by being very hardcore about the music curriculum, having very high standards, expecting the students to rise to the challenge. I knew when a student had it, had that special talent, when they were just totally consumed by music.
I don't remember a time when music wasn't a part of my life. I wrote my first song when I was 12. I moved to Nashville when I was 15. I signed my record deal at 19. I was raised on music, but in a way, music kind of raised me. When I was younger, I spent a lot of time dreaming, and now I get to live those dreams. But dreams are just dreams without the people that support and motivate you. The one teacher who inspired me the most, especially musically, was Ms. Becky Thomas from Central High School. And I think the most valuable thing that she taught me and all of her students was having a talent and a passion for music is a beautiful thing, but having the work ethic and that passion to match it is really when you can find magic.
Well, with Ms. Kelsey, I first met her freshman year when she became a member of the beginning choir. Her sophomore year, she became a member of the Bobcat Company, which meant every morning at 7:00 AM. And it was for the only truly dedicated.
Mind you, Bobcat Company was like exclusive. I mean, like, you had to really put in a lot of work and time to do it, and that made me really want to work hard to match what I thought I was good at. And it's one of the most valuable lessons I've ever learned.
Music education is so important in the lives of our children, but the lack of funding is just first and foremost. I did see Kelsey present a million-dollar check to the Metro Nashville Public Schools Music Department.
That was from, that was from CMA Fest last year.
Wow.
And I think the coolest thing about it, like, I grew up as a fan, and I didn't even know that, but then getting to be on the side of it and be an artist and know that, like, okay, I get to play 20 minutes in a stadium for 70,000 people, and that's really cool, but it also gives another 12-year-old girl the opportunity to pick up a guitar in a high school, you know?
That's wonderful. I had no idea.
Fast forward to years. There has to be a change of mind and hardware. Music class, art class is looked at like science and math. All of that is so important, especially just exercising that creative muscle when you're young and being able to have that outlet. When you're going through changes in your life, and you're growing up and you're figuring out who you are, it's important to be able to have that creative outlet as an opportunity for you, even if you choose not to love it or pursue it. It's just important to have that there.
Becky, please come forward so we can honor and recognize you for your amazing contributions to the students of Knox County. Okay, well, we were scheduling our special recognitions for this evening. I noted how much the video we just watched would most likely mean to our next group of honorees. We will, taking this opportunity, as one school year is closed and another is about to begin, to recognize all of our employees who have retired during this past year. A majority of these folks have dedicated their lives to Knox County Schools and our children, and they deserve both our appreciation and admiration. Not all of them could be here this evening, of course, but on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you for your hard work and loyalty, and thank you for all you did for our students and community during your years of service with Knox County Schools. We are very honored to recognize those of you who could be here in person tonight and those who could not. If all board members and the superintendent will join me up front, Ms. Cottney will read the names of each of our retirees that could be here this evening, and as your name is called, please come forward for a photo with the board.
Retirees, if you are here tonight, if you can come up on the stage to my left, your right, and see Mr. Bolton, and then come across to the board, we'll take your photo with them when they get ready. Our first retiree is Dorothy Mills Bryce from Austin East Magnet High School. Are we gonna, okay, are we gonna do this all at the same time? Our next retiree is Elizabeth Brimmy of Seager Bluff Preschool. Our next one is Judy Burnett of West High School. Cheryl North Cartwright from Northwest Middle School. Amy Cross Kate from Amherst Elementary. Ms. Donna Cather of Farragut Primary School. Chandler from East Knox County Elementary. Laura Jean Chandler. Clara Patrice Dotson of East Knox County Elementary School. Pat Foster of North Shore Elementary School. Alfred Huffaker of Gresham Middle School. Polly Justice of Farragut Primary School. Tandy Lacy of Harden Valley Elementary School. Sandra Logan of West Hills Elementary School. Rhonda Sanford Mitchell of Breeky McLeod Elementary School.
Congratulations.
Rebecca Radding of Bearden High School. Ronald Reed of Sarah Simpson Center. George Reynolds from Beaumont Elementary School. Cindy Shepherd of Karnes Middle School. Karen Sams of Whittle Springs Middle School. Rebecca Vittoto of Spring Hill Elementary School. Suzanne Weddington of West Valley Middle School. And last, but certainly not least, is Michael Weller of Westview Elementary School.
As the board's taking their seat, I'll just say, as a former teacher, any good teacher knows that if there is confusion in the classroom, it's probably because the teacher did not give clear expectations. However, I will also say thanks to Scott Bolton, and this is, to my knowledge, the first year that we've done a system-wide recognition of our highly-valued educators, and we hope this is just something that grows and becomes bigger each and every year. For those of you that retired, I know you've already been propositioned by Ms. Roundtree to come back and sub for us, but we hope you will volunteer, sub, and also, Terry and I are members of the Knox County Retired Teachers Association, and we would love to see you become involved in that as well. So, thank you to all of you retirees. We have several people signed up for public forum tonight regarding items that we will be voting on this evening. As we come to those items on the agenda, we will call the speakers forward to be heard prior to the board's discussion and consideration.
Item 7, Consent Agenda.
Move approval.
Motion made by Ms. Fugit. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Mr. Norman. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Item 8, Board Policies, 8A. Approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G180. Personnel files as amended.
Ms. Roundtree, do we have, no, okay. Mr. Norman.
So moved.
Oh, sorry, yes.
I move adoption of A.
I'll second.
Okay. Motion made by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Mr. Norman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to defer this one for 30 days. Ms. Owens, we spoke to us at public forum on Monday night, and she brought up several, several things that I thought we should consider, and especially, there was one as regards protecting the identity of our staff per an investigation. And I don't think we have good, clear media guidelines as regards that. So, that's my motion. I'd like to defer it for 30 and 30 days and have a discussion of that policy. Thank you.
Okay, this is a substitute motion made by Mr. Norman that we defer this board policy second reading for 30 days.
I'll second it.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Fugit. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries to defer it for 30 days. Ms. Cottney?
Item 8B, approved second reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G152. Student transfers within the system as amended.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Horn. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Item 8C, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G360. Personnel transfers as amended.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to combine some of these policies. Is that appropriate at this time?
Okay. Go ahead, Ms.
I guess I need a second.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Ms. Owens, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Discussion, Ms. Owens.
There's a sheet that says, it has some red writing that is taken directly from those policies, and there are two sections here. One is policies with only references or grammar changes. So, those are things where the Law Department has corrected an incorrect legal reference, or we have made a change like capitalizing "board" instead of lowercase, and I've pulled those all out for you. So, my motion would be to group these policies together, approve them all at once, and then waive second reading, so that we don't have to go through all of those and then go through all of those again. At the bottom of the page, these are very minor changes, and these changes, I guess I'll make a separate motion in just a minute. Should I go ahead and talk to it while we're here?
Okay. Ms. Mr. Dufler?
First.
Will we need to suspend or waive the board? Will we need to have a motion to waive or suspend Policy Development and Adoption B200 before voting on that?
Well, yes. I mean, you can make it all part of the same motion. You're asking that the second reading be suspended under G200, and then if you want to read out the policies that Ms. Owens referencing, then that can be all part of the same motion.
I'll restate the motion that way. Okay. So, the motion would be to group these items together, which only require a legal reference or grammar change, or a reference to another policy, and to also suspend the second reading so that we would only just hear these today. And that would be on G360, which changes a legal reference, G460, which corrects a legal reference, G461 adds and bereavement in the title and corrects the legal references, and that was part of the policy already, G470 corrects legal references, I230 only adds a cross-reference to Policy 231, I380 takes out an old legal reference that's no longer valid, G381 is just grammar changes and adding a cross-reference.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Owens and seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Is there any discussion?
May I have to approve?
There is, oh, a discussion. I'm sorry, I thought we, okay. So, Ms. Owens, did you have your lights still on? Did you want to say anything? No? Okay, so, Mr. Dufler, we can just go ahead and vote on this? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Item 8D, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G370. Administrative suspension as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owens, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this policy? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Item 8E, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G380. Dismissal of tenured teachers as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owens, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Item 8F was voted on with the combination of the policies, and Item 8G, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G440. Time schedules and extra duty as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owens, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Items 8H and 8I were part of the combination, and 8J, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy G463. Long-term leaves of absence as amended.
May I have to approve?
Motion made by Ms. Horn. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norman. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed. Motion carries.
Item 8K, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Item eight K, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy G-464. Family and medical leave as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Owen. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item eight L, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy G-466. Legislative leave as amended.
So moved.
I'd like to, can I make that motion? I'd like to make a motion that we approve that on first reading and suspend second reading, because the only change is adding the word "or supervisor."
Okay, Ms. Owen has made a substitute motion that we suspend second reading on this policy.
I'll second.
Mr. Norman has seconded. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item eight M was one of those combined. Item, I'm sorry, M-8N is approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy G-480. Student, teachers, and teacher interns as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item eight O, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy G-500. Compensation guides and contracts for support personnel as amended.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Horn. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight P, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy G-510. Evaluation of classified personnel as amended.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Item eight Q, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy G-590. Leaves and absences of classified personnel as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight R, approved first reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education policy G-600. Substitutes and part-time employees.
I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve on first reading, as this is language that is duplicated in another policy, and waive second reading.
Okay, Ms. Owen has made a substitute motion to waive second reading on this policy. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norman. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight S, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-160. Special education as amended.
Okay, we have one speaker, I believe. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our speaker for this item is Kim Kreditch. If you'll just come to the podium and state your name and county. You have five minutes.
Kim Kreditch, do you want my address? Thirty-nine, twenty-five Oakhurst Drive? This is, I fully approve of this update. It looks like a few typos that you're correcting and a few legal terms, but for those of you who don't know me, there are a few new faces. For twelve years, my family has been here since we moved here in 2005. I have twin boys who just graduated from West High School, one in the IB full diploma program, and another who received a special education degree. The one in the IB program is going off to college out of state, and the one who got the special ed diploma, Ben, has been accepted to the UT future program. We're thrilled with both outcomes. And we have a younger son who's going, who's a rising junior, also in the full IB diploma program. For the last twelve years, I have had to fight very hard for Ben's full inclusion at Sequoia, Vine Middle Magnet, and West High School. Over those years, I have met some of the most incredible teachers, aides, parents, and peers of many of the people here. I just turned fifty. My husband and I are celebrating our twenty-fifth wedding anniversary this September, and I've got out of Knox County school with an incredible education for twins. I want out of this advocacy business, because it's a volunteer position, and I have helped over two hundred families on a volunteer basis. I've gone to IEP meeting after IEP meeting, and I would like my life back. I have an undergraduate degree in music from Duke and a graduate degree in conducting from the New England Conservatory, and I was a music educator, public school in all levels and private school before we moved here, and I fully expected to go back to that teaching profession, but I couldn't. And once it felt like I could, I was busy advocating for all these other kids. I used to think that there was nothing more important than music, but I found that human dignity trumped even that. So, I'm asking whether you all really know the policy that you're amending. It's like a renewal of vows, I feel, from you all, because I was promised an analysis of transportation, how much it costs to transport students away from their zone school, as opposed to keeping them in their zone school in the regular ed setting with the supports needed. That never happened. I was promised that you would have a full-blown meeting about special ed. I've never heard about it. I've been looking, I've been asking board members, and I've never seen it. Everything seemed to shut down when the lawsuits came. And yes, I'm the person feeding those plaintiffs to the attorneys with whom you're settling these cases. But recently, I've found that going to IEP meetings, it's working, but only for those meetings that I'm at. So, I'm proud to say that there are fifteen students who are fully or almost fully included in regular ed, preschool, elementary, middle school, and high school, for whom I've helped advocate with the parents. And I want to frame this in a positive light. Remember what happened with the preschool program? How I kept saying, "You're denying all these kids their least restrictive environment?" Well, you were, but then you instituted the blended program. There's no such thing as blended in the law. It's inclusive. And guess what? By doing so, it wasn't the mandate to start that program, but you provided the vehicle through which inclusion was, could be, the law could be compliant, you were compliant with the law. Does that make sense? It wasn't the actual program. It's that you instituted a vehicle where placement, full-time, regular ed placement in preschool is fully successful for, it must be eighty kids or more. I'm asking you to do the same thing for the students from K through twelve. And I've only got twenty-four seconds left, but my exit strategy is, all these phone calls I get, I'm going to send them to you, and I'm going to ask them to CC me on their emails to you all, so that you can see what it is I have been doing for the last twelve years. And I hope, I hope that you, and use me, I'll come in and talk to you. I'm an open book. Thanks.
Thank you.
Approval?
Okay, Ms. Roundtree has made the motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norman. Is there any discussion on this policy by the board? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight T, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-171. Interscholastic athletics as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Deathridge. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight U, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-190. Organization for instruction as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman. Do I have a second? Seconded by Ms. Deathridge. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight V, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-211. Selection of instructional materials other than textbooks as amended.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Norman, but seconded by Ms. Owen, sorry, Ms. Horn, Ms. Owen.
I'd like to make a substitute motion that we adopt this one, but waive second reading, as the only change is to add the clarifying words of the content when referring to timeliness or permanence.
Okay, Ms. Owen has made a substitute motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Fugit. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight W, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-212. Reconsideration of instructional materials and textbooks as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye, all opposed.
Motion carries.
Eight X, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-221. Web pages as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight Y, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-222. Internet safety as amended.
I'd like to move that we adopt this one and waive second reading, as the only changes are taking out the hyphen in "online" and taking out the word "district" to change it to "all electronic devices."
Okay, Ms. Owen has made a substitute motion. Mr. Norman has seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say, oh, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight C was part of the combination of policies that were approved. Item eight AA, approved first reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education policy I-240. Reading center.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Eight BB, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-241. School libraries as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight CC, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-250. Off-campus trips as amended.
I move.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree. Seconded by Ms. Hill. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight DD, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-270. Family and community engagement as amended.
Okay, motion by Ms. Horn, seconded by Ms. Fugit. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight EE, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-280. Title I as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Deathridge, seconded by Mr. Norman. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight FF, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-351. Credit recovery as amended.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight GG was part of the combined policies. Eight HH, approved first reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education policy I-382. Testing accommodations for students with disabilities.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Deathridge. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight II, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-383. Test security as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Deathridge. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight JJ, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-420. Controversial issues as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight KK, approved first reading to rescind Knox County Board of Education policy I-421. Controversial materials.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion carries.
Eight LL, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy I-431. Religion in the curriculum as amended.
Motion by Mr. Norman, seconded by Ms. Deathridge. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries.
Eight MM, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy J-191. Misbehaviors and disciplinary options as amended.
Motion made by Ms. Owen. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Roundtree. And Ms. Roundtree, go ahead with public forum.
Let's see, we have one, one speaker signed up to this specific policy. Courtney Shea.
My name is Courtney Shea. I'm a resident of Knox County. I'm also a member of a group called Justice Knox. It is a, it has fifteen congregations that are from all parts of Knox County. It has about twenty congregations that actually have members that have been working with us. Probably together, we may cover ten thousand people who are regular worshippers. We are, I want to speak in favor of the changes to policy recommended by your staff. There are four policies, J-191, J-193, J-194, and J-211, which have, for which changes are recommended, to include language which refers to the program of restorative practices in your schools. Restorative practices is a program which, some schools have totally implemented, many schools are being trained in, and it works with another program called Positive Behavioral Intervention Systems, to give teachers and students and principals an alternate way of dealing with problematic behavior. It is proven in other districts, other school districts, to be a very positive program. And I was very impressed with the discussion that the board members had on Monday night. You all were asking very thoughtful questions. I appreciated that people wanted to get this program right, to make sure it's implemented correctly. I also really appreciated where they said that this program has been talked about for several years, and the community really needs to see some forward progress, and we may need the board to actually take some leadership in this. Chairman Bowns, you suggested training for board members, that they would be able to attend some of these trainings that the school systems have found so helpful. It was wonderful to hear from the middle school principal, who said, once she went through the training, it really clicked in, that this was for all schools. It didn't matter whether a school had a high number of suspensions or not. This really was a program that benefited all schools. And we are strongly in favor of the policy changes here. We also understand the concerns that were expressed on Monday night, that you were concerned that, especially with J-191, that the changes in that particular policy reference a document which has only been, which, a reference guidelines which have not been widely circulated, and which people have not had a chance to talk about. And I understand that you may have some concerns about that particular, that one policy, but I would note that I did not hear, at least at Monday night's session, any particular concerns about J-193, J-194, and J-211, and, so you won't have to listen to me four times. I'm sort of combining all of my comments. So, on behalf of Justice Knox, and also on behalf of myself individually, I want to urge that all four be approved. If you still have questions- all four be approved. If you still have questions about the first one, which is the one that brings the student guidelines, the student conduct guidelines into play, we sort of understand if that one may not be approved. But I'm hoping you approve all four. I think the guidelines have been worked on and circulated and really are in good enough shape that they can, that they can now be circulated to the public. I know I've got 57 seconds left. But I think it is very important that we start off this school year with a policy statement from the board that says that schools will be implementing restorative practices and that those are an option. The principals still have all the other options of suspension, in-school suspension, other discipline actions, but restorative practices is an option for our schools, especially those schools that have completed their training. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, we are looking at item MM, I'm sorry, policy 1, let me find here.
J-191.
Yes. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor from Ms. Owen and second by Ms. Roundtree. I see lots of lights. I don't know, Ms. Hill, okay, Ms. Hill, Mr. McMillan said your light was on first.
Thank you. You all have just now been handed a copy of J-191, which I will point out is not the same as the one that is in our agenda. I had requested Monday night that Dr. Davis and Ms. Massey present to us the version that was worked on after the meetings with the elementary, middle, and high school principals and the adjustments had been made. Dr. Davis, do I understand that this document we have in front of us now is in fact that product?
I'll defer to Ms. Massey. I think she worked on that particular draft.
All right, thank you.
Ms. Massey.
So the version that you have, that Ms. Hill shared with you, is the version that has the original misbehaviors but makes it align with the language for the other, the student suspension policy that you're voting on, which would be the recommendation that we heard from the principals is to stick with what we're doing for now, for this year, as we work with teachers and kind of bring everybody on board. But it also includes the language that when a student returns from a suspension, that we'll be utilizing restorative practices to make that reentry back into the school so that the student has an increased likelihood of success in not having those behaviors repeated.
Ms. Massey, can you tell me, because where that is in 191?
It's on page four of five, lines 30. It's number three. If administrator determines that the suspension is long-term, the administrator shall develop and implement a plan which includes restorative practices to the extent practicable in schools where training has been completed for correcting the behavior when the student returns to school.
All right, thank you, thank you. I know we've had concerns in the past about voting on policies that everyone hasn't had a chance to study and that the public has not had a chance to look at. And I have, I have great reserve about that. Also, I also am very concerned that we don't delay any longer than we have to because we've got principals that are waiting to kind of see what our final version is going to be. I just talked to one this afternoon, asking about what to put in their agenda and this type of thing. So I, right now, instead of stating my particular preference, I would like to hear some other comments from the board about substituting this version, recognizing though that it is a version that not everyone has had a chance to fully study.
Okay, we have lots of lights on. Mr. McMillan, yours was next.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two short questions, or I think they're short questions. Number one, I'll direct this to you, Ms. Massey.
Yes, sir.
I guess. As I understand it, if this is adopted after the second reading, the schools that have been trained will implement it this year. The schools that have not will wait till next year or till the training is complete. Is that, or will they begin once, if they should get trained by January, will they start then?
So if we adopt this as it is written, this is the, this is the same misbehavior guidelines that were in place in the former policy. So it doesn't, the guidelines that the committee spent the year developing would not be part of this, this policy. So those changes would not happen until we brought it before the board again in the spring. But for the schools that have been training restorative practices, we would ask that they utilize those skills in dealing with student behaviors, not the guidelines, because the guidelines are, we haven't adopted the guidelines. We've been asked to postpone that, and that's something that you all are considering tonight. So the, these misbehavior levels would apply as they have in the past. The difference would be that we would, for the schools that have restorative practice, training, they will set up a plan so when the student reenters, that process will be in place to create that kind of supportive environment. And then the schools have the autonomy to utilize restorative practices with students as they see appropriate, because we haven't, in, when we come back in the spring with, or the information I sent you all, or that Ms. Cote sent you earlier, it's more prescriptive about what happens for certain misbehaviors, what kinds of restorative interventions that you would use. But what Ms., I'm sorry, what Ms. Hill is suggesting is that we postpone that for a year and just do this piece.
Point of order, I think we have a motion on the floor that's very different from the conversation that we're having right now. Because we are discussing this set of policies, but the motion on the floor is to adopt J-191.
That's right.
As amended.
Okay, Mr. Law Director, how would you advise me?
Yeah, we have to talk about the motion on the floor. We'll have to vote.
I'll just take executive privilege and ask that we postpone it for 30 days.
Personal privilege to postpone policy J-191 for 30 days.
Can we do that with the motion on the floor?
I think, I mean, a motion's on the floor, it's been seconded, and there's been a discussion. So at this point, we can, I was gonna say, we can have a substitute or an amended motion to postpone, but personal privilege would not apply at this point. And the discussion does need to be with regard to this particular policy.
To the first policy, okay.
Since I had the floor, I guess, my question is, I thought you could invoke personal privilege at any point. You could have discussion, and once a board member asked to exercise personal privilege, that was it. It was shut down for 30 days. There was no vote?
We can, we can pull up the policy, but I mean, you know, with all respect, Mr. McMillan, I believe it states that it's prior to discussion that you can, so in other words, when something's called out, an item's called out, you can, any board member can then say, I'm asserting personal privilege. But, but once the motion's on the floor and the discussion is ongoing, then there would need to be a substitute or an amended motion at that point.
You're probably right, but I can't, I can't cite you an example, but I believe that we, we have, have had some discussion, or at least beginning discussion, on some items in the past. It's, it's such a seldom-used thing that it's, it's difficult to recall. So what do you want to do at this point? Do you want to continue discussion, or?
Can we make a substitute?
Unless we can, we'll go back to the first motion unless we can pull it up here about the personal privilege.
We're trying to pull up the policy, but, you know, if there's any more discussion on this, on this particular policy, J-191, that can be had at this point. And if somebody wants to make a substitute or amended motion, that can be done. But we're checking on the policy as far as personal privilege as well.
While you check on that, I will, I will defer to Ms. Hill if she wishes to make a substitute motion.
Ms. Hill, do you want to make a substitute motion?
Is that appropriate at this point, then, Mr. Dupler?
Yes.
To request a substitute motion?
Certainly, that's, that's certainly appropriate, yes.
All right, to replace what is currently in our agenda with the new version that we were just given. And Ms. Massey has pointed out the revisions in that, so that is.
And I will second that so we can begin discussion on the amended motion.
Okay, so we have a substitute, a substitute motion on education policy J-191, made by Ms. Hill and seconded by Ms. Fugit. Let's have discussion on that, on the substitute motion. So I can go in the order the lights were on in the last one, and next would be Jennifer Owen to speak to that. But we are speaking to the substitute motion now, not the original.
The original, and you talk, but I think it is not at all transparent to the public to call this a new version. This is the previous policy that we had with some very minor changes. So all of those folks who have asked that we move forward with our discipline policies, this is not forward motion at all. This is exactly what we had to begin with. And so I think it's very disingenuous of us to take this and, and pretend that we are moving forward when that is absolutely not what we're doing. This policy is the policy that's there right now. If anybody wants to go to the Knox School site, click on policies. It's right there. I'm also extremely disappointed that Ms. Horn and I have both asked for the guidelines to be attached to the policy that we were looking at, and they weren't. I asked that they be sent to the board, and unless I didn't find them, they also were not sent to us. So some of us, they were, did I dismiss them? Okay, I had a lot of, a lot of email. So I got the one that had just the list of levels, which is not what we had originally asked for. And so I ask again that it be attached. I don't think we should have to be asking for these things again and again and again. I think our administration needs to give it to us when we are looking at the policies. So that is very problematic. Then to go backwards with something that is not at all what we have been talking about, that's especially concerning. So there's, there's no way I will vote for the substitute motion.
Okay, next we have Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a question for Ms. Massey. Sorry to make you hobble back up there again with your boot, Missy. Just to get some clarification, because I hear what Ms. Owen is saying, but what I think I understood Ms. Hill to say and you to say is that this hard copy document represents the desired changes from the administration and the teacher feedback that you received. Am I understanding that correctly?
So we have, the information that I sent you, or not me, that Ms. Cote sent you, that has all of the different recommendations for the discipline guidelines, that is the , that is the discipline guidelines developed by the committee over the past year with feedback from the principals where we've made changes. That is not what you see here. What you see here is indeed, our policy has existed before, matching, taking out a couple of the pieces of language that we had agreed to about the, making the recommendation that we don't suspend students for being absent or tardy. That seems like not a best practice. So those are the changes that you see here. The reason that those, the reason that that came was because we had feedback from the principals that said we need some additional time to make the changes to the new recommendations, that they would like to have more time to get more teacher input, more teacher feedback, and more training.
Okay, so, and I just want to reiterate, I think what we heard from a lot of the principals that were there on Monday that had the opportunity to speak, was that they had given that feedback. They liked the direction it was moving in. Mr. Brown, one of the principals at my school, I think, said it best, that it's a paradigm shift. And for schools that have not yet been fully trained in these practices, it perhaps may be an unreasonable expectation. And so I'm just wondering if there's, can you make a substitute motion to a substitute? Sorry, sorry, Mr. Dupler. I guess my only.
The question is, can she make a substitute motion to the substitute motion?
I apologize.
So I've reviewed the policy, and the policy itself is somewhat of a gray area. It changes Robert's Rules of Order. I'm referring to B-162. So based upon the reading of the policy, and what it states is that any member of the board may postpone an agenda item for one month unless the director of schools and the board chair declare the need for emergency action at any time. So unless, unless that declaration of emergency is made, then, then I would advise the board that, that Ms. Hill's assertion of personal privilege should be honored.
I'm all for that.
Okay, well.
Ms. Roundtree, are you not making a such, another motion? We're still on her motion, yes. We have to vote on that, okay.
No, we don't vote. No, she.
She took privilege, and Mr. Dupler said that ended it.
So it's done, yeah. I mean, you know.
I'll get to you, Missy, to talk more about this. Thank you.
It's postponed to next month.
Thank you.
If I may, Madam Chair, given that this will be on next month.
We can't have any more discussion or comments, I think, once personal privilege is granted, is that right?
About, about what we should do for next month. It's not about the policy. It's just about being prepared. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I'm asking Ms. Massey and Dr. Davis to, to give us everything that you hear has been asked for up here. I hear Ms. Owen's repeating a request and, and just a real clear document from you all about what, what this really means, how it can be implemented, how, how it fits with what we're hearing from our principals, so that we're not talking policy procedure and getting them all mixed up. Is that clear as mud for you? Thank you, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Cote.
Item 8NN approve first reading of Knox County Board of Education policy J-193, student suspension as amended.
Do I hear a motion? No motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Dethridge. Is there a second? Second by Ms. Fugit. Is there any discussion? Okay, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Massey, can I just clarify if, sorry, all of these policies are sort of grouped together with the same language. So does this language then align with the guidelines as they are? Are the rest of these that deal with the same thing aligned to the other document?
They would align to either set of guidelines, with the exception of the policy that was previously discussed, has a, would need to have a couple of language changes because that removes suspension for truancy and attendance, and it changes language from abusive language to vulgar or profane, frame language, which is the language that's in the statute.
Okay.
But other than that, it would align to either the current guidelines or if we adopted the new, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. I just, you know, I appreciate the robust discussion and us getting this correct. And I agree, we have talked about restorative practices into the, and I feel confident that principals whose buildings are ready for it will use it, whether we put it in a policy or not. They're trained professionals, and that's what we expect them to do. I'm not speaking to whether or not we should do this. I'm just reminding the board that we have two readings for a reason. We can talk about it tonight, we can do some other stuff, and unless we drastically change a policy, it can pass next month with a few tweaks on second reading.
Thank you, Ms. Fugit. Next would be Ms. Dethridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Looking at the suspension policy, like Ms. Massey said, it's just really talking about suspensions and changing a few things, and basically saying that restorative practices will be used to exempt practical in schools where training has been completed. So it does align, I think all of these policies align, it just depends on when we're going to use restorative practices, and so that's basically what this suspension policy says. But they all do align with what we just discussed earlier, so I don't know if we want to continue this process of going through here, or just say, wait on all of them.
Okay, Mr. McMillan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have a question in reference to restorative practices, since there's been so much said about that, and it's mentioned in more than one of these items. Do we know of any comparable system like Knox County where this is being employed?
Yes, the committee looked at several different models. There are several large school districts across the United States.
They were very similar to the United States, I mean, United States, excuse me, to Knox County in makeup and everything.
Well, I could-
Size and makeup.
Yes, Metro Nashville has several schools that are utilizing restorative practices. There are several large districts across the United States, but a lot of the information that the committee reviewed came from Metro Nashville, because they're using restorative practices in many of their schools.
In many? Why are they not using them at all? Because they've not been to training?
Because they're like us, they're in the process of, they're on the journey of training all of their schools.
Okay, all right. How long have they been using this? Last year?
I'm not 100% sure what their exact timeline is. I mean, there's a lot of, I mean, I can get that information for you, I just don't have that information at the moment.
Well, do you know, let's, let me sort of ask it a different way. Do you know of any systems similar to Knox that have used restorative practices for at least three years?
So there is a lot of research around restorative practices, so I can get you some very specific information about the outcomes.
Okay, I'd like to see something about what, how successful they deem it to be. And also, I'd kind of like to see maybe a comprehensive list of what exactly is in restorative practices. I mean, it's, maybe it's by design, I understand to give the administrators some discretion, you don't want to limit them, but I would like to see a little bit clearer definition of and examples of restorative practice before next month.
Okay, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so I believe we're at, we have a motion on the floor for J. 193. Is there any other discussion?
Okay.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
No.
Motion carries. Oh, should I?
Item, oh, no.
Okay.
Item 800, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy, J. 194, zero tolerance as amended.
Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Hill.
Second.
Second by Ms. Fugit, any discussion on this policy, J. 194? Mr. Norman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question for the law director. In my reading of the policy, I'm curious if this policy in any way is contrary to state law about zero tolerance. It seems to give some discretion to principals or administrators about zero tolerance, and it seems like state law would not allow for any discretion in those cases.
Mr. Decker?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Norman, which portion are you, specifically are you looking at where there's some discretion?
It's just an interpretation, I think. The first red line, the first red line in the first paragraph, "And shall be offered an alternative placement to complete school work." I don't know, you know, it's just, could be, how do you interpret that? And then in the last, in line 24 and 25, "On reentry to school, a restorative conference." Oh, that's okay, that's not really an issue. But it's more that line, and five, "The director of schools has the authority to modify the suspension requirement on a case-by-case basis." Seems like that's not going to be possible, according to state law.
Okay, yeah, yes, I see what you're saying. Okay, so if someone is charged with a zero tolerance offense, you are correct that under state law, that that student would be suspended for that year. I mean, that's what the law provides. You know, so as far as modifying the suspension, there would have to be some type of finding that, you know, for whatever reason, zero tolerance did not apply in that particular situation. So that's what you're talking about.
Right.
You know, and then as far as offering an alternative placement, I think that was that language that you're referring to, in four and five, was added as kind of a, you know, additional language from lines 28 and 29, talking about, you know, alternative school placement, so that the suspended students would be able to receive some type of academic instruction.
Okay, and so that's just where, I think there's just, for me, as I read it, there's just confusion, and it seems to be, it does not seem to line up with state law to me, and so that's my contention.
Okay, Ms. Dethridge.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess my question is, what does state law say? I mean, to me, it says that, you know, zero policy, I mean, zero tolerance, that you do have option of continuing education at alternative site. But if it's something that is zero tolerance but can be adjusted throughout the year according to the case, I mean, the basis of the situation, that you can send that child back to their zone or their school if possible. Is that basically what state law is saying we can't do? Or, I guess my question is, so what does state law say? So I know what we're talking about.
The state law is referenced in the policy 49-6-3401. It's got quite a bit more language as far as than what's contained in the policy. But basically, I mean, it provides quite a framework, you know, it talks about the disciplinary hearing and things of that nature. But the very next section in state law also talks about alternative schools for suspended or expelled students. So it would be my position for the board that this particular policy does comply with state law, not only with the section that's cited, but with the very next section, 49-6-3402.
And then the director of school has the option of returning its student back to school if they deem necessary, because I know some situations where a person was caught or doing something that was zero tolerance, but during the year, they were allowed to go back and finish up at their school because of a certain situation. I mean, it was to the point where they did everything they needed to do in order to return.
I appreciate what you're saying, Ms. Dethridge. I think what would have to happen in that case, and again, the policy is not a full recitation of the law, so, but the policy refers to the law, so if the director of schools does make a placement of a student that is a change or a modification in any way, then the director of schools would have to comply with the state statutes.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Norman, do you want to speak again?
Yeah, so, Mr. Dupler, then you're saying, if a student brings a gun to school, our zero tolerance policy says they'll be expelled or suspended, expelled for 180 days, according to state law. But if our administration could alter that suspension to have it served in an alternative school, and that would be in compliance with state law. That's right, okay.
Okay, we're going to go to Ms. Fugit, did you wish to speak? Your light was on. Okay, Ms. Dethridge, did you wish to speak again? Your light was on.
Yes, it was, and I was just going to say, I hope the director of school has a little bit more discretion on not letting people bring guns to school, but I understand what he was trying to say, and let them come back to school, but he does say that he does have that option.
Okay, thank you. If there's no further discussion, then the motion has been made and seconded, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Mr. Norman, I mean, sorry, Mr. McMillan. Motion carries. Do it, go ahead, Chair.
Item 8PP, approved first reading of Knox County Board of Education Policy, J. 211, harassment, intimidation, and bullying or cyberbullying as amended.
Okay, I have, do I have a motion?
I make a substitute motion to amend the language on line, let me find it, page two, line 15 and 16, where it says, "Through restorative practices, positive behavior, intervention support," and to insert the words, "Professional developments regarding before implicit bias."
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Ms. Horn has made the substitute motion, Ms. Roundtree has seconded it. Is there any discussion on the substitute motion?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We have public forum.
Okay, we'll have to have public forum first. Go ahead, Ms. Roundtree.
Okay, we have one speaker signed now.
Just, I wanted to ask a question in general in reference to public forum. Are we adhering to the two-speaker per-subject rule tonight?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, so Ms. Roundtree, would you call our public forum speaker?
Yes, sorry. So we have one speaker signed up for this policy. Persephone Webb, if you'd state your name and county. And as a reminder, you have five minutes.
That's actually not true. I'm here to speak about J. 210, which is not currently on the agenda, so you can defer my time to the public forum at the end.
Okay. You still want to speak at the end, is that what you're saying? Okay.
Okay, so we have a substitute motion on the floor made by Ms. Horn. Is there any discussion?
Could Ms. Horn repeat the?
Ms. Horn, would you repeat your substitute motion? I didn't write it down.
Yes, on page two of the policy, lines 15 and 16, to insert the words, "Professional development regarding before the word implicit biases," because it doesn't make sense as it is.
Right.
So I think we're looking to have professional development regarding that subject, so it just inserts that clarification.
Okay, so if there's no further discussion, then all in favor of the substitute motion made by Ms. Horn, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Item 9A, approve Knox County Schools Career and Technical Education Local Plan, State Initiative, Federal Perkins Grant Allocation in the Amount of $852,319.31.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Dethridge, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9B, approve agreement with the City of Knoxville regarding a Tennessee Community Crime Reduction Program grant for Vine Magnet Middle School in the Amount of $13,415.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Horn, any discussion on this grant? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9C, approve application and receipt of funds from a Laura Bush Foundation grant for Spring Hill Elementary School in the Amount of $7,000 designated for the purchase of library books at the school.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Roundtree, any discussion on this?
I don't know.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9D, approve donation from Knoxville Central High School Athletic Foundation in the Amount of $136,406 designated for construction of a new covered baseball batting facility at Central High School.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Norman.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Fugit, any discussion?
Ms. Owen.
I'm sorry, Ms. Owen, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9E, approve donation from Fairgate High School Football Booster Club in the Amount of $185,914 for the purchase and installation of a new video scoreboard to replace the current school board at Fairgate High School.
Move to approve. Second.
Motion made by Ms. Horn, seconded by Ms. Fugit, any discussion? Mr. Norman?
No discussion, but Eddie Courtney's been, he's sat through about four hours of meetings the other night, and he's still here, he's sitting over there. I just want to say hi to Eddie and thank you, and all that good stuff.
Okay, if there's no other discussion or comments, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
9F, approve donation from Bricky MacLeod Elementary School PTO in the Amount of $29,786.4 for the purchase and installation of playground equipment at Bricky MacLeod Elementary School.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Ms. Fugit, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
10A, approve contract with Don Johnston Incorporated for a reading and writing software technical tool for the term of August 1, 2017 through July 31, 2018, at a cost of $67,986, which may be extended for an additional four years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Fugit, seconded by Ms. Owen, any discussion on this contract? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
10B, approve contracts with M&amp;M Productions USA and Pacman Sports Productions Incorporated for broadcasting rights to Knox County Schools events for the term of August 1, 2017 through July 31, 2018, which may be extended for an additional four years, one year at a time, for a total of five years, at no cost to Knox County Schools.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms. Hill, seconded by Ms. Fugit, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
10C, approve contract with Employment Screening Services Incorporated for a school volunteer verification system for the term of August 1, 2017 through July 31, 2018, which may be extended for an additional four years, one year at a time, for a total of five years.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Ms., was that by Ms. Roundtree? Okay, Ms. Roundtree, and seconded by Ms. Fugit, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Roundtree.
At this time, I'd like to request we take a 10-minute recess before we continue our agenda.
We'll take a 10- We'll take a ten, let's, uh, let's make that. Without objection, I'm sorry, from the board. Is there any objection from the board?
I say why do you take a recess?
Okay, then we will take a recess until six forty-five and resume our meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, we're gonna resume our meeting back in order. We will have public forum regarding the regular agenda items. Number A, approved statements of acceptance for Bearden Middle School and West High School. Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are two speakers signed up for this specific item. The first speaker is Heather Wilder.
My name is Heather Russell Wilder, and I live in Knox County. I thank you all for being here tonight because this is a very important issue. From the time my three children were in preschool until I rolled them in Knox County, they attended private schools. They attended UT Early Learning Center, Thaxton School, Episcopal School in Knoxville, and Webb School in Knoxville. Upon learning a major administrative change was going to occur at Webb, I became concerned as to the future for my children. And the IB program at West High School was similar to the background that they had received in private school. Now, I have a background in IB as my grandmother began the IB program then known as ISAAC in Los Angeles County, California, after leaving Knox County Schools. And after attending several board meetings on this issue and meeting with Jim McIntyre, I hedged my bets and bought a home in the area that had always been zoned for West. And when it came time, I transferred my children, and they began at West High School and Bearden Middle. My oldest son is a graduate, and my 16-year-old just finished the NYPD program and has begun the two-year IB diploma. My 15-year-old is a sophomore who is working on the NYPD program and has been since eighth grade. As of right now, the class of 2019 and 2020 will be the first to go through the NYPD program and finish the IB diploma when you vote for this program. After listening to the discussions of this board and the other night, I took away some of the concerns about this program, which were cost, retention rates of the trained teachers, and equal access to NYPD and IB programs. While the community has spoken about the excellence of our teachers in the IB NYPD program and why it is needed, I would like to address certain areas. First, there was concern over the number of transfers the other night. Well, I'm sorry, I may be to blame for part of this. In-zone students are leaving private school and/or private school families are buying or renting in West High and Bearden Middle zone so that we can go into the IB program. I'm one of the first. And I can prove that because the tax assessor office has noticed this trend. This year, when they were accessing property taxes, homes outside of Sequoia Hills in the West High School zone saw up to a 50% increase. When I called to find out why, I was told that they had noticed the buying of homes in the area and how this trend correlated with the IB program. It's not a coincidence. Economic growth comes from education. Number two, there has been a lot of discussion about more privilege coming out of this program. I would like to inform you, West High School is an inner-city school. Thanks to 25 years of rezoning, the middle class has been stripped from West. At least 60% of our students receive free or reduced lunches. 80% of our students come from poorer working-class families. In fact, a large number of our students live in the three-and-a-half-mile area known as the Dust Zone. If West were to, in fact, if West were to dissolve our foundation, we would receive more Title I money than Austin East. That means the IB and NYPD programs are desperately needed to bring economic and educational equality to our community. Additionally, I would suggest that the PYP program be looked at and initiated at Westview Elementary so that we have a congruent program, elementary, middle, through high school. Now, the last thing I would like to say is personally, one of my children is autistic. I have always kept him in private school up till now because that kind of education is what he needed. As a matter of fact, there have been great successes with children who are on the autism spectrum in the IB program in other areas of the country. In fact, I personally know of 10 full IB graduates from West High School who unfortunately were private-school educated but graduated with full IB diplomas from West. Now imagine how many more students will be helped when you say yes to this program. Thank you.
Speaker is Russell Wilder. State your name and your county, and you may begin.
I am Russell Chamberley Wilder of Knox County. And first, I'd like to extend a welcome thanks to all the present board members here this evening to listen because this is an extremely important decision that you'll be voting on. As myself, I am a sophomore at Louisiana State University where I am part of the Ogden Honors College, as well as many other leadership and honorary positions on that campus. I was in the private school system from kindergarten up until right through senior year, when I first entered the public school system at West High School. Then I was able to take a couple of IB classes thanks to Ms. Bast, Dr. McIntyre, and my mother. Just in my senior year, I witnessed a completely different dynamic of class through IB, and I am beyond thrilled to assert that it is absolutely incredible how these classes work. And I know you all know about it, but I'm gonna reiterate it for you. Let's examine the cores of the program. First off, they provide a sense of inquiry based learning, excuse me, in developing a child's natural curiosity, meaning the children are self-engaged in learning. There are stats to prove this. According to the San Diego Unified School District, these programs enable approximately a 46% increase in a child's memory recall and retention, overall motor processing skills, and interaction with others. That's an absolutely fantastic stat that I would be ignorant to ignore. Not only that, these programs provide a sense of principal action to these young scholars because that's what they are, scholars to be recognized for being engaged in learning. The programs provide world language as a part of the curriculum because languages are the lifeblood of education. They are the ideal preparatory tools, not only for college, but life, as other academic breadth and depth encourage the students and scholars to care about more than just results. Time management, independence, and other necessary skills are implemented in these programs. With all these benefits, the question you should be asking yourselves is not whether or not, or is whether or not you will be able to continue the education of these elementary, middle, and high school scholars or not, or better yet, why you are not already doing it. Going on to some issues and contentions that my mother did not cover, now I understand there were a couple of logistical concerns in the meeting that was last presented, and I'd like to crystallize some of those contentions. First, I'll begin with the legal advice regarding Swiss law and arbitration. Now, I've been doing research on this for over a year now because I've become fascinated with it as it is now being introduced into Baton Rouge in Louisiana. I even called an LSU law professor earlier today who litigated in Switzerland for over a decade of his life to make sure I was right. According to the official compilation of federal legislation of Switzerland and the main IBO website, the way it'll all go down is this: One, we have the opportunity to pull out any time after the IB trial has begun, and we attempted the programs. Two, if we pull out, we have to allow those in the program to do, finish it out, basically. If they wish to continue, wait till they finish it out, and that is only for 11th and 12th graders. That's it. Now, so that way, there won't be any legal concerns if we did that unless we violate the students' rights and not allow them to finish. Even then, litigation would occur here in the U.S. so there wouldn't be any traveling to Switzerland or anything of that nature because the infraction would have occurred here. Now, looking at this realistically, 12 other schools in Tennessee are a part of these programs. And if it was that dangerous legally to sign, they wouldn't be a part of it. Another concern that was expressed was the overcrowding and how this would lead to Bearden Middle to deny transfer students. My response to that is we already have some such as that. We have LMIM STEM Academy where you can fill out an application to hopefully get selected. This is not mutually exclusive to Bearden Middle. Overcrowding can be fixed with additions and even temporary buildings. The fact of the matter is that the schools being more overcrowded is great in that more youth scholars desire the program's education. It also means that programs are doing their job, educating students with the best resources and skills available and preparing them for life. Now, when I was in my IB classes, the teachers were beyond fantastic at keeping us engaged in learning the entire time. For instance, Mr. Eggleston, who taught IB2 math, set up individual learning assignments for everybody based on progression in the material to learn. This enabled all of us to continue learning even after we finished the core projections. Now, if I had the opportunity to do it all over again, I would not have gone to private school. I would have stayed in the IB program like a bunch of my friends did who went after middle school, went straight to West, just so they could be a part of the program. And like I said, I've been witnessing the Baton Rouge School District, one of the most segregated and racially divided districts in the nation, attempt to implement the program. It has been proven in Germany, the programs aid in alleviating racial tensions and uniting socioeconomic classes with education. It's the stronghold most of the nation is pushing for, and it is desperately needed here. And I guess you could say no, but I'm not gonna tell you what that would make you all look like. Now, I'm not going through with the program because it only hinders the indication of the scholars to not go through with it. Last time I checked, Knox County is supposed to be preparing them, not preventing them from getting the best education it can provide through these programs. Thank you.
That concludes public forum on this item, Madam Chair.
Okay, do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Fugit. Second by Ms. Horn. Discussion. Ms. Roundtree? I'm sorry, which, Ms. Owen?
I was just gonna say that I believe we asked Ms. Odom to bring us some additional information tonight that she has.
Ms. Odom?
So, we collected a great deal of information today, so remind me specifically what you want to have right now. Sorry.
I just didn't want you to sit here all this time without...
Oh, you just, oh, thank you!
And thank you, should thank Tanya. It was specifically numbers of transfer students.
Okay, so we sent, for which year, Ms. Owen? All three?
I'll defer to the board for that. I'm not sure who asked for that.
We've got it.
I think we got that in an email.
We all got that in an email, or do you just want her to share it?
I just wanted to share whatever she wanted to bring that was additional because she's been here this whole time waiting to give that to us.
Okay.
What would you like to share, Ms. Odom, before we continue our discussion?
Well, I went ahead and sent you guys the enrollment data for Bearden Middle, and we also went through specifically the students that are attending, what their zoned middle school is, as well as the denials. So, Ms. Roundtree specifically was looking for, are there patterns? You can't really do that without looking at the denials as well because that shows where the interest is. And so, those were attached. So, I believe that was everything that was asked for. We've got the amounts for training. We have the numbers of IB diploma graduates, IB certificates, and we also went through how many of the eighth graders leaving Bearden Middle are actually attending West High School. So, if you have any questions about what we sent today, I'd be glad to answer it.
Okay, Ms. Roundtree.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have any specific questions about what you sent, Dr. Odom. I spoke with you earlier and just wanted to thank you again for pulling this, all this information together. I did just have some general comments unless other folks have questions for Daphne. Do you have a question for Daphne? Okay. And just looking at the information, I, probably along with every other board member, applaud the folks that have reached out about IB and how it has positively impacted you. I tried to answer all those emails, and if I missed you, I'm sorry, and I guess I would just, my challenge to you would be, please take that energy and move it forward and write your legislature and ask them to please fully fund BEP. But moving forward specifically regarding IB and the NYPD program, I feel like there's maybe, we're not all on the same page as far as the funding, the fiscal capacity piece, and the physical capacity piece of the program, and so, oh, did you go away, Daphne? Sorry. I didn't know if you could just briefly, for the folks here this evening, share about the funding piece, how IB, I think, I saw Ms. Welch's here from Great Schools as well, IB was originally funded through a grant through Great Schools Partnership, so if you could just speak to that.
Right. So, initially, 50% was. So, it was about $250,000, and then, then, year two, the Great Schools was gracious enough to give us 200 of that, and then that has ended. So, we are 100% responsible for the costs for NYPD moving forward for fiscal year 18.
Okay. And could you tell us what that total cost is?
Yes. So, when you look at the, now, these are the, without taking, I think, into consideration the 3% raise, but the FTEs, the six foreign-language positions, equal about $429,000, and that is with the IB facilitator position as well. So, we're looking at about $430,000 in salaries, and then we give approximately $40,000 to the school for training and materials.
Okay. So, as far as the fiscal capacity, I know there was a question earlier about, we've already approved the budget, which is correct, this is already in the budget. There was concern raised in our discussion on Monday night that agreeing to this document, it could possibly be interpreted that we were continuing to sign on going forward with the NYPD program. And so, that is where the concern lies for me. One, in the fiscal capacity of the funds going specifically to this program, and then the physical capacity, because when I reviewed the minutes of this board approving the NYPD program in December 2014, it was approved as a magnet school. And so, from this point going forward, we are obligated, my understanding, Mr. Law Director, please correct me if I'm wrong, is that this board needs to operate it as such as a magnet school. So, to do so, I know Ms. Fugit mentioned rezoning. I echo Ms. Hill's comment from Monday night that I don't think that's necessarily the solution. Portable was mentioned. I'm not sure that that is a viable solution as well. I know Mr. Dillingham mentioned to me earlier, I think those run about $250,000 to put in a portable there. So, I think we have, we have some issues surrounding the logistical aspect of this program. I want to reiterate, I loved hearing from the teachers. As an educator myself, I could tell there's so much passion there in parents that are supportive of this program. I love that, but I also think we have a duty as a board to be fiscally responsible, and if we say we're gonna provide a magnet program, it needs to be available to all the children in the county, whether it be via lottery, similar to STEM, or in another manner. I think it's unfortunate in some ways that we were not more strategic when we were looking at this rollout. I understand that there was a huge lift of support in the Sequoia community for this, but I also know that Northwest Middle feeds to West, and Northwest would have had the capacity to handle the IB program, to handle the transfers. I see Daphne nodding. This isn't, you know, an idea out of thin air. So, I think we have some hard decisions to make. We have needs throughout the county, and we do talk about excellence for every child. That is our goal. So, is it excellence for every child if we've said we're gonna make it a magnet program and then we're closing the door? I don't believe so.
Ms. Fugit, I had some questions for Ms. Odom, unless you had, did you have questions for her? Okay, Ms. Odom, with your email that you sent today, and kind of in regard to what Ms. Roundtree was just sharing, I wanted to clarify some things. So, according to your numbers, I believe, I just want to make sure I'm correct, that for the enrollment of, at West High School with 1,401 for 2017, there were 13 diploma graduates and 112 that participated in certificates. Is that correct?
Okay, so, the, for the school year '17, there were 13, 47 students. The 1,401 is what's projected as of today. Okay, so, looking at, yes, 1,347 students last year, and the, in 2017, there were 13 IB diploma graduates and 112 that received IB certificates.
Okay, so, that would be roughly like 10% of West High School that, or, I'm not sure, because it wasn't broken down according to classes, so that would be...
Well, the certificate and the diplomas are awarded to seniors. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Another question was, looking at your numbers for the number of students who attend Bearden Middle School but are zoned for Fulton, Karnes, and Bearden, out of those that, there were only 10 total, let's see, that would have been 10 for '15, '16, and 10 for '17, '18, or was it 5 and 10? So, that were, that moved on into West High School, I guess, is what I'm asking. So, the number of students that were zoned for Karnes, Bearden, and Fulton, only a small portion of those actually moved into West High School?
Yes, ma'am. Very few students who are zoned for the other feeder schools from Bearden Middle attend West High School, very few.
Okay. And the other question that I had, but first, let me go back and say that I really support Ashley Jesse's attempt to bring the career component into that, and I think it will help us as, for more students to participate, because it seems to me like it's a small minority at this point, but I know that Ms. Jesse can build that in the future. Now, the other question that I had, because I know the board had a lot of discussion in the first years ago about Northwest Middle School because it basically has some of the same patterns that Bearden Middle School has, although I understand that the community involvement was a huge component, and that was absent at Northwest. But when I look at the denials, what stood out to me hugely, with the same demographic and these children feeding into West High School, is that they were astronomically more than any other school. There were 24 in '15, '16 that were denied, 29 in '16, '17, and 21 in '17, '18, and most of the other schools only had 1 to 5, maybe was the largest amount of denials. Is there an explanation why so many children from Northwest that had the same feeding pattern are not being accepted into that program?
Our transfer office runs a lottery, so everyone that applies, literally, it is a random lottery that's been drawn. Now, it is, it is very staggering. We were talking about this today. So, you have 3, maybe 7 in 2016, and you have 1 that was accepted, however, the denials are in the 20s. And so, that is something that I was in the transfer office pulling that information. I don't have a reasoning for it, they just gave that to me today, but you're absolutely correct. The number-one school looking to get into Bearden Middle for the NYPD program is Northwest Middle.
Which would make sense to me because they are a part of that feeder pattern. So, just not saying one way or the other, but when I saw those numbers, I found them to be staggering and very concerning since they are in that feeder pattern, and since Northwest, according to Ms. Roundtree, was one of the viable options that had larger capacity to do a NYPD program. So, anyway, I think that's all my questions for you. I think Ms. Roundtree had another question, and we'll go to Ms. Fugit and then Kenley. She doesn't have a question for Daphne.
Thank you, Daphne, again, for all the information you provided. The other thing I wanted to clarify for folks, so, again, we're all on the same pages. When the board voted to approve the NYPD program, we did approve it as a magnet for 6 through 10. And I want to make sure that we're on the same page, Daphne, when we discussed this earlier. There are no transfer students that are accepted to West High School for grades 9 and 10 for NYPD. So, the reality is, we have, if I could just finish...
Yes, you are correct. Yeah, you're correct.
So, what I've read about NYPD and the importance of you're following this five-year arc, and this is, this is why the program is so important, we're losing a huge chunk of kids that are not even completing that arc, or if perhaps they only wanted to go to West and complete the NYPD, that's not currently an option available to them. And so, we're, we, I think, have some overlap here in our discussion about NYPD versus the DP program. So, there are kids that go to West as freshmen to start the DP program.
Yes, ma'am, the majority of them do. So, you are correct. There, there is some, somewhere along the line, there's been some sort of miscommunication because we have not treated Bearden Middle as a magnet school. We have taken program-of-study transfers, which basically means I want to transfer in based on a particular program, which is essentially a magnet, but the transfer office has not offered it as a magnet option, but as a program of study. What that means is, is that if you are an eighth-grade student and you want to attend West High School as a magnet student, your option is for the DP program, correct?
Yes. And so, I think we've seen from those numbers that you shared with us that there are not a lot of kids that are availing themselves necessarily of that to go directly into West for the DP program. So, I think there's just, you know, I think a lot of the aspects of the program are great. I appreciate any time that I see the community passionate and involved about a subject, but it's unfortunate that I think there was not enough strategic discussion about how to make this work for our Knoxville community because it's very hard as a board member to sign on to something and say, yes, I want to continue this as a program that we have agreed that is supposed to be a magnet, and it is not being served as such. So, I'd just like to hear some other folks' thoughts on that, and that's all for me. Thank you, Daphne, again. I know you guys were, they were, I don't, I'm sure Daphne didn't stop working today trying to find all that information for me, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Fugit, with your permission, I'm gonna go to Kenley, and then I'll come back to you. Kenley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to say thank you to every one of my colleagues and teachers that are in the audience right now. I, myself, am part of the IB diploma program at West High School, but I would like to speak to the fact, the complete value of the middle-years program and how I have benefited just from IB as a philosophy of teaching. So, as an eighth-grade student at Hall's Middle School, I was weighing my options of either going to a private school to better my education, or we were presented with the option to transfer into West High School for the IB program whenever the middle-years...
So the, so what I've read about NYPD and the importance of you're following this five-year arc, and this is, this is why the program is so important, we're getting, losing a huge chunk of kids that are not even completing that arc, or if perhaps they only wanted to go to West and complete the NYPD, that's not currently an option available to them. And so we're, we I think have some overlap here in our discussion about NYPD versus the DP program. So there are kids that go to West as freshmen to start the DP program.
Yes, ma'am, the majority of them do. So you are correct. There, there is some, somewhere along the line, there's been some sort of miscommunication because we have not treated Bearden Middle as a magnet school. We have taken program of study transfers, which basically means I want to transfer in based on a particular program, which is essentially magnet. But the transfer office has not offered it as a magnet option, but as a program of study. What that means is, is that if you are an eighth grade student and you want to attend West High School as a magnet student, your option is for the DP program, correct?
Yes. And so I think we've seen from those numbers that you shared with us that there are not a lot of kids that are availing themselves necessarily of that to go directly into West for the DP program. So I think there's just, you know, I think a lot of the aspects of the program are great. I appreciate any time that I see the community passionate and involved about a subject, but it's unfortunate that I think there was not enough strategic discussion about how to make this work for our Knoxville community, because it's very hard as a board member to sign on to something and say, yes, I want to continue this as a program that we have agreed that is supposed to be a magnet, and it is not being served as such. So I'd just like to hear some other folks' thoughts on that, and that's all for me. Thank you, Daphne, again. I know you guys were, they were, I don't, I'm sure Daphne didn't stop working today trying to find all that information for me, so I appreciate it.
Thank you. Ms. Fugit, with your permission, I'm going to go to Kenley, and then I'll come back to you. Kenley?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would just like to say thank you to every one of my colleagues and teachers that are in the audience right now. I myself am part of the IB diploma program at West High School, but I would like to speak to the fact, the complete value of the middle years program and how I have benefited just from IB as a philosophy of teaching. So as an eighth grade student at Hall's Middle School, I was weighing my options of either going to a private school to better my education, or we were presented with the option to transfer into West High School for the IB program whenever the middle years program was not an option for me. This choice that I had as an eighth grade student to even be able to have the option to pursue an education in a way that was not standard to the regular, regular curriculum was extremely liberating. And I think it's a choice that middle school students, elementary school students, and high school students should be able to make. Whether or not we have the capacity in buildings to, in order to be able to accommodate every single student who wants to have this choice, that's, that is unfortunate. I completely agree. I think that is extremely unfortunate that some people, like my sister, weren't able to get the transfer into Bearden to be able to take advantage of this program. But the fact that it's an option allows our school district to stand out and to be one that offers this educational opportunity to people. And the fact that it's not able to serve as many as you would hope inside a building is, is unfortunate, but that does not necessarily solve the problem to cut it completely. One thing that I would like to pose as a question is, what we're really asking is, are we, are we going to allow buildings to be a barrier to the educational opportunities of the children in our district? Are we going to allow that opportunity to be there for people, even if it's not as many as we would have wished? Because I know you all know the extreme value of IB, and I can speak to that to each individual one of you after this. But I feel like that was very verbalized Monday meeting, but just logistic purposes, I think that the value and the option for students to be able to pursue this program is far, far outweighs the logistics of the situation. So thank you very much, and thank you all to my colleagues and teachers.
Ms. Fugit.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. The board knows how I feel about this, so I don't really have to tell you. I think that we should support this, and I fully intend to support this. I, I understand Ms. Roundtree's concern about somewhere along the way, somebody dropped the ball and didn't treat this as a magnet program. That can be remedied. We have a magnet program at the STEM Academy that turns down 200 kids a year on a waitlist because the building isn't big enough. We, so there are other programs where space is an issue. I would like to say to this board, much like we've talked about restorative practices and some other things, we need to take a leadership role and say that we value an international baccalaureate education in our district. Other school systems, Nashville now has three high schools, about four middle years programs, and some elementary programs. I think we need to prioritize that we want to expand this, not walk away from it and walk away from the students that have spent a lot of time. We know it meets the needs of a lot of our economically disadvantaged students. And, you know, the one thing, at some point, I would like to ask our, our principals what they'd like to think, but we also haven't heard from our superintendent. We haven't asked him what he thinks, and he and I have talked about it, and I'd like to know, you know, Mr. Thomas, do you want IB to be in our district?
Mr. Thomas?
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to, to speak to this. And let me say, let me start out by saying, oh, gosh, about five months ago, I started talking about the reasons that I wish to be superintendent of this school district. And kind of narrowed that down to three, three priorities that I had, that I felt like that I wanted to stick around and try to see if I could make a difference. And those priorities were increased student achievement, it was to build a positive culture, and it was to eliminate disparities. And after listening last night to the testimonials, if you will, of the speakers that, that talked, there's no doubt in my mind that this program contributes to all three of those priorities, contributes heavily to those priorities, after hearing students talk, after hearing teachers talk, and the passion with which they talk, hearing administrators talk, one being, only having been in the school now for just a few weeks, that very passionate about it, and, and our high school principal that's been in the building for one year to talk so, speak so passionately about it, and parents to speak so passionately about it. It raises the expectations for students, the, the middle year program, 6 through 10, grade 6 through 10, higher expectations for students, which we're all about, those higher expectations, the positive culture with the parental support in the schools, the community support in the schools is what we're about. And another thing that impressed me too, because looking at disparities, we have said, and I have said, want to eliminate disparities in all subgroups. Well, you know, after listening last night, all subgroups in the middle year program participate in this program. So it's the English language learners, it's students with disabilities, minority students. It sounded like to me, I, I know to one of our board members after our listening to all that, I said, my goodness, we need to expand this program if it's that great. And after looking at the information that Ms. Bounds had asked for, and looked, the, the number of transfers turned down from Northwest Middle School, you know, my goodness, maybe Northwest Middle School needs to be, be an IB school. So again, you asked me for my recommendation, so I based my recommendation on what, what my philosophy is and what I have been basically preaching, I guess, for the last five months. I've only been superintendent three months, but I've been talking about this for five months. So my recommendation is to continue the program. I've looked at per people expenditures at our middle schools based on last year's information. Bearden Middle per people expenditure is probably fifth from the top, so meaning we spend more on five other of our, or four, five of our other middle schools than we do, do on Bearden Middle School. So yes, there is a financial, there's financial, there's cost to it, but you know what, there's a cost to, to, to a lot of things that we do, and I know how hard and how difficult, and, and here's the other thing I've said, and certainly willing to do it, is program evaluation. Let's, let's evaluate, let's subject this program to the same evaluation standards that we're looking at some other things. And, and before we, before we eliminate it, let's, let's try to determine the value. So, so my recommendation to the board, and I certainly support and abide by whatever the board decides, but is to, is to keep this program. Thank you.
And before I call on any board members, I meant to say this last night, but Superintendent Thomas, I really appreciate your comments and that you don't constantly interject your opinions unless asked, and I think that's a very admirable quality. And with that being said, our next person is...
Ms. Bounds?
I ask you a question, can I?
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Thank you. At, at some point, I would like for us, I want my other board members to ask questions, but at some point, I would like Ms. Jesse and Mr. Toth to maybe, since we only limited, allowed two speakers at public forum, I think it would be nice if, if the board has questions, they're here and could speak to anything, questions we've got.
Do you want that before the discussion or at the conclusion of it?
No, I'm just saying, letting everybody know they're here.
Okay.
If you've still got questions and would like to hear from them.
Okay. So let's go ahead and get these three people to have their lights on for discussion, and then Ms. Jesse and Mr. Toth, if you'll come up after that, and we'll let you address the board as to other thoughts you have on it. So next was, let's see, Ms. Owen, I believe.
All righty. Listening to the capacity and zoning questions that we've had and those concerns, and having recently been through a lot of rezoning concerns, and a lot of, a lot of requests from our community to correct problems of the past, I'd like to suggest that somewhere along the way, we look at rebuilding Beardsley or a Beardsley Rule Joint School of some sort that would specifically be a magnet IB school. It is right in the center of the zone that we are talking about. It is, it's where the school is now, where Rule is now. Beardsley is no longer there. That location, it's a beautiful location, but it's also right in the spot of all of these students that we are talking about who are asking for transfers and not getting them. And so I think it would do well to serve that population of students who, who are not getting those transfers, as well as address the concerns from the community that wants a school closer to that area. So I hope we will consider looking at that. And if I may address our audience for just a minute, regarding the funding piece, we absolutely need to hear from you regarding what you want, but when we say that we need your help in contacting legislators, what we often get is, oh, yeah, that's your job. No, they don't listen to just us. They need to hear from you. They need to hear that funding is important. If our legislators at the state level would fund the basic needs, let me tell you, they don't. If they would fund our basic needs, we could spend more county funds on other programs. We could spend a lot more county funds on other programs. Our legislators need to stop using that rhetoric that they're fully funding the BEP, because fully funding the BEP means that they are giving us the absolute minimum they possibly can by law. Fully funding the BEP is crap. Probably just made a lot of them mad, sorry. They need to hear from you. They need to know that it's important to you. They need to know where you want those dollars to go, because we only have so many of them. And once they do that, we could do a lot more. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Norman was next. Sorry, Mr. Norman, yeah, Mr. Norman, then Ms. Horn, and then Ms. Dethridge.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chair. I especially appreciate our superintendent speaking in favor of this. I'm in favor of it, and I'll speak for it. But there are a couple items that I think need to be brought up, or I'd like to, to at least question. And I don't have any, one of the problems that I have is I don't have any direct, direct experience seeing classrooms and compositions of classrooms. And sometimes I'm, I'm hopeful, what, what I'm very encouraged about, of course, is the, the middle, middle school program, because it's comprehensive, it takes all the kid, you know, it's for the whole school. That's not quite the same in the high school. It may be completely open to everybody in the high school, but I do worry a little bit about this sort of, the composition. Sometimes you, you can have almost a private school inside of a public school, some kind of exclusiveness maybe, and I hope that's not taking place, and I'm not characterizing it in a, in a, in a incorrect way. But, but I do, I, I do remember when teachers, like when I was teaching, there were, there were classes that, low-level math classes that had 33 and 34 kids in them, and there would be advanced classes, which I, I, you know, AP classes and so on, and they'd have four or five. Well, it's exactly upside down of the way it should be. So that's a concern. I mean, I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to lay that on, lay the blame on IB at all. And certainly, I think IB has its success and its draw and its, how people are desirous of it, has caused the problem. And they can't, IB can't be blamed for, you know, the past administration, this is prior to Mr. Thomas. They can't be blamed for administrative failures. We didn't do it right on magnet, or we didn't do it right on zoning, or whatever. That's not, that's not IB's problem. IB's just successful, that's all you can say. So anyway, I just thank you, and I just, I just want to say, yeah, absolutely, I'm in support of it, and hopefully we can expand it and make it, make these kind of opportunities available to even more kids in Knox County. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Horn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll make my comments brief because they, they reflect a lot of what's already been said, but I appreciate the many, many emails. I'd stopped having time to reply to all of them, but thank you for your comments and obviously your passion, and, you know, this is what we look for as far as excitement about education, wanting kids to, kids and teachers to be excited about their education. So I do think we need to look at, we obviously have some problems and issues with space and how this has been administered. As Mr. Norman said, it's not the fault of the current students and teachers in those, in the schools, and that's, so I don't think they should be penalized for that. I think we need to be figuring out ways to expand this program, whether it's with portables, looking at other locate, other schools that can become IB schools. And so I will, I am obviously planning to support the, the contract. Thank you.
Goodness, Horn. Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was also looking at the transfer information. Most of you heard what I said about starting something and then taking away from the kids, and they're the ones that suffer. I also know a lot of what we're talking about, about what, four teachers, seven teachers? Daphne?
Six.
Six teachers? So I think it's the curriculum that, that a lot of people are really interested in, what they offer. So maybe, you know, if you have so many kids at Northwest Middle that want this opportunity, why can't we offer them some of the type of courses? I think it's the, is it the, the fact that they want to be an IB, or that they want the curriculum that's offered at, at the middle school? And if we share that information and we offer them similar type of coursework, maybe that will help solve some of the problem, instead of trying to build new schools, which I'm not, I mean, you know, I am for what you're talking about. But anyway, I just think we have to figure out how to make this opportunity available to more kids, because we are out of space, guys, and, and that's just reality. And I don't think we need to figure out how to take it away from the kids, figure out how to expand it. And if that means trying to figure out how to offer the coursework, let's figure out how to get that done. If you need more money, go to your legislators, but at the same time, go to your commissioners. We have, we, we might be able to get them to give us a little bit more money too. So go to anybody and everybody that has a way of getting us some money. Spend more money at the gas pump. I don't know, tax, I mean, sales tax, whatever. But anyway, we do need money, and I think we need to just figure out how to offer it to more kids.
Okay. Ms. Horn had one additional comment, so Mr. Toth and Ms. Jesse, if you want to be coming forward at Ms. Fugit's request to address the board, and Ms. Horn?
Ma'am, can we add this as a topic for our retreat in August, please?
Okay. I think that would be a good idea. Okay. Who wants to go first, Michael or Ashley?
Well, I will start. I know that one of the board's biggest concern is capacity, and I've already talked to several of you about that. And we've just committed our schedule, and we're working on student schedules right now. And the transfer numbers, to my understanding, are set by the administration, and I know that we can make room for more students. Will it be a strain? Yes. But I am committed to opening our doors to more of these students who are being denied transfers. So that being said, I don't, I can't give you, I can't commit myself to a number, but looking at the numbers and working with Mr. Bailey, who works on the schedule at the school, we're committed to taking 10 to 12, maybe 15, per grade level. I can't take that many in one grade level, but I can take that 6th, 7th, and 8th grade. And I'm committed, and I'd like to speak to Ms. Owen's concern about a school in, in the Beardsley area. One of my goals is to bring that community into our school. I don't, I hope, I got emotional from my first administrative interview seven years ago, when I had to leave Green. I love those kids, I love those families, and I know what they go through. And they deserve every opportunity that the students who live in Sequoia Hills and Rocky Hill and the other areas deserve. And I would hate to see us take this away from them, just because at this point in time, we can't make it available to everybody that we would like to. But I look at logistics and capacity as a challenge. I love a challenge, otherwise I would not be here. I thrive on this, and I want to work together with you and with our central office staff to see how we can resolve these issues in a positive manner for all of our students.
I just wanted to comment a couple of things. I know I spoke on Monday night about some of the issues and some of the things that I want to do at West High School. But we've talked so much about disparities. We have spent so much time over the last three years talking about disparities, and this is an answer. NYPD is for all kids. It is for every single kid. It doesn't matter what home they go to at night, what car they get into during the day. It is for every single kid. And so I think as a board and as our district, if we are putting our heart and soul into disparities and making everything for all, this is the answer. And so you, tonight, I hope that you will vote with your heart and know that this is for all kids. It doesn't matter. But we, we are?
We are!
You got it. Thank you.
I amend the motion on the floor.
Okay. Yes, we have a motion, so...
There is an amendment?
There's a motion. I made the motion to approve this.
So you want to make it?
I just wanted to...
Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given the discussion, I think, and what has transpired the last time about the magnet program not being implemented with fidelity, would it be possible to amend this motion to have some sort of language that states at the end of this school year, we are going to transition Bearden to a magnet lottery system for IB? To have some way to know that this is going to be addressed because while I appreciate Mr. Toth's enthusiasm to make room for these kids, I think that we're going to continue to see this as an ongoing, ongoing issue that we need to address. And I would love to expand it to more places. I would love that. But I think, as you heard from my colleagues, we need additional funding to do so. So given that the magnet program has not been implemented in the way that this board previously approved, I would like to change the language of the motion. I don't know if you're amenable to that, Ms. Fugit, or Mr. Law Director, if you'd like to?
No, I'm not.
Mr. DeFler, do you want to?
I'm not amenable to her friendly motion. She'll have to make a substitute motion.
Well, or she can make an amendment, an amended motion. I think that's what she's trying to make.
Right. She has an amendment, she has made a motion to do an amended motion.
Then I have a question.
So we will need a second to get...
Yeah, you'll need a second on that.
Need a second to get it to discussion, then discussion, and then we'll entertain your thoughts, Ms. Fugit. Is there a second on that?
A second for discussion.
Okay. Ms. Owen has seconded it, so now we open up the discussion to the amendment to the motion, the amendment being made by Ms. Roundtree to reiterate the board's desire that it be a magnet and a lottery. Okay.
Ms. Fugit? Thank you. I'd like to speak to that. I am gravely concerned that if we require that in this motion without finding out how they plan to add more students, just making it a magnet doesn't, doesn't kick out kids who are zoned there. So I don't know what that does. And I believe magnet obligates us to about a quarter million dollars estimated in transportation costs to transfer children to a magnet school, which is probably why we didn't do it the first time. As I recall, we did talk about wanting to make it a magnet, that we would start it without it perhaps being a magnet so that we could, I mean, I'm not disagreeing with you. I don't, I didn't read the minutes, and I'm sure you did. I'm just saying that I think part of it is where do we get the $250,000 on top of this to provide transportation? And I don't know how just calling it a magnet takes care of the space issue. So I hate to make our motion incumbent upon that without more input from the administration on how they can make that happen. I'm not opposed to making it a magnet. I just worry that we will find ourselves in this exact same place a year from now without some information from them.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Fugit. Ms. Roundtree?
Thank you, Ms. Fugit. I appreciate your feedback. And just in my review of the minutes, we did vote on it as a magnet. So I guess the way that, as Daphne talked about, that kids are transferring in now is not the same as the magnet process. Yes, it is. Could you speak to that, please, Daphne?
So, yeah, I was sitting back here thinking the only, truly the only difference right now between Bearden Middle and magnet programs is we don't call it Bearden Middle Magnet. And I'm going to tell you why. Ms. Winstead has done an exceptional job of accepting the maximum number of transfers that she could, and those numbers are similar to some of the numbers in our other magnet schools. They receive an allocation the way that our other magnet schools do. The only difference is we don't treat it as a magnet for ninth and 10th grade at West. So that is what would need to be looked at, is that if we're going to treat it as a magnet, it's a six through 12, six through 10, meaning that students could apply for NYPD at West and no longer apply for DP, which would take away the screening, the screening process, which would then actually increase access. So the point of NYPD is to boost the numbers of the DP program. So if we can get to the point where we are accepting transfers there, that'd be fantastic. I commend both schools. Both schools have pushed and pushed and pushed to the limits, and their numbers rival some of the numbers of our other magnet schools.
Thank you for your input on that, Daphne.
Okay. So we have an amendment to the original motion that will need to be voted on. Is there any further discussion? So a vote of yes will mean the approval of the amendment, and a vote of no will mean you do not approve, or nay would mean you are not approving the amendment to the motion to make it a magnet lottery. Okay? So all in favor with a yes vote to amend to the amendment to the motion that Ms. Roundtree made, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No.
Aye.
So the motion, the amendment to the motion has failed, and we will go back to the original motion that is on the floor. Is there any other discussion? I have a few comments to make. Is there any other discussion before we take a vote? Ms. Hill?
Just one comment. What is the length of time typically, probably Dr. Davis or perhaps Dr. Thomas, that a program is in, in effect before we can fairly assess whether the results are, are what we expect them to be as far as increased student achievement and...
Dr. Davis or Superintendent Thomas, who wants to answer that?
Obviously, I think a program like this, you have to look at it after the number of students have gone through. But I think we can look at some measures that are more short-term type measurements than, than looking at, I know when you look at the numbers that have received the IB diploma, those are, those are not really high numbers. But when you look at the number of certificates, though, that has grown. My understanding is, too, that the likelihood that students who complete the IB certificate also have a higher likelihood in terms of college success as well. So I think we could go back and look at some, some short-term things, maybe, I hate to really put the, put the, put the staff under this kind of pressure, but maybe over the next few months, we can take a look, define what those short-term measures are, and come back to the board and say, this is, you know, this, this supports what you have done. I think long-term obviously would be better, but, but I, you know, I think the board's wanting something more immediate than saying, next, wait five more years or four more years, so...
And I do think at the high school, that probably is very realistic. At the middle school, though, what, what time, what type of a timeframe would we be looking at?
Again, I would like...
Be sure that we're getting a lot of bang for our buck here.
Yeah.
You know, spending this extra money are, in fact, our kids, you know, are the results there.
Well, and I think, I think we still would have some information that we could come back to the board over the next, let me say this, if the staff kills me tomorrow because of what I've committed us to, then you'll know we couldn't do it. But, but we'll get back with you and let you, kind of give you a timeframe on what we think we can deliver back to you, looking at some short-term measurements for the program.
Okay. Thank you. I would just like to say in regard to Ms. Roundtree's assertion that this being a magnet according to our previous vote and the overcrowding possibilities, I would just like to go on record that Knox County Schools has had a five-year capital improvement plan, and it will be very difficult to book Bearden Middle School above other schools for renovations, additions, and portable classrooms. I myself have over 37 portable classrooms in my district alone, and it took three years to replace a portable classroom that came from Oak Ridge, from their project during the war, whenever. So it is very difficult, and we have a lot of needs. And I just want to go on record as saying that hopefully, it won't be an issue, but I did feel like I needed to say that, so it would be on the record. And then the final thought on this that I have, that I would like to share with everyone, that while it may have caused some people angst, and the community of Bearden and West great concern, this is a school board that does their research and is open to discussion and dialogue before making key decisions and spending taxpayer money. And I would just like to commend my other board members for their thought-provoking deliberation, their research before voting tonight. So with that, we'll ask Ms. Cottney to do a roll call vote.
And this is, excuse me, this is the approved, the acceptance, correct?
Yes, the original motion.
Uh, yes.
Ms. Owen?
Yes.
Mr. Norman?
Aye.
Ms. Fugit?
Yes.
Ms. Horn?
Yes.
Ms. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
No.
Ms. Roundtree?
Yes.
Ms. Bowns?
Yes.
So the motion carries with an eight-one vote. Cottney, next item.
Item 11B, approve intergovernmental memorandum of understanding with Knox County Commission and the mayor of Knox County regarding the repayment of $11,962,133 to the county for the remainder of a capital improvement project for energy management equipment.
Okay, do I have, who?
So moved.
Ms. Fugit, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Norman, is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to know why...
Ms. Fugit?
I'd like to know why all the West people have left when the fund's getting ready to start.[1367.01][1367.01](laughter) We only have three more things to vote on. I would like for you to stay engaged.
Thank you for coming tonight. Okay. I think we have a motion and a second. Ms. Cottney, is that correct on this item? Or are we on another item?
Yes, Ms. Fugit, motion, and Mr. Norman, second.
That was Ms. Fugit's discussion on another item. Is there any discussion on this item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
Item 11C, approve the Knox County Board of Education annual calendar for the 2017-2018 school year.
So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Roundtree?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Norman. Is there any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries.
11D was withdrawn. Item 11E, approve one-year suspension of Knox County Board of Education policy I-200, class size, to allow for an increase to the average number of students allowed in some career and technical education courses for the 2017-2018 school year.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Roundtree, seconded by Mr. Norman. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Public forum. We have...
Ms. Odom?
Sorry. Did you have a comment? Her light was on.
I'm just going to make another motion. I'm going to do the afterthought.
What? Was it on item E?
No. It's, okay. Before we move to public forum, I would like to move to reconsider two items on consent agenda that I missed. I'd like to reconsider items C1 and 2. So that is the motion. The motion is to reconsider items C1 and 2 from the consent agenda.
Mr. Law Director?
Okay. Yes, Mr. DeFler.
She can make the motion. There needs to be a second.
Second.
Okay. Seconded by Ms. Roundtree.
C1 and 2.
Do we have discussion on this? Oh, okay. Yes. Is there, okay, Ms. Roundtree, sorry.
I didn't know if Ms. Owen had anything to add. And thank you for bringing this back up. I just, where is Missy? Oh, there she is. Sorry, Missy, again, to make you hobble up here. I didn't, we didn't get any data on the show cap, did we? Okay. She's shaking her head no. You don't have to come all the way to the podium. I think we got that. So there was no data. Wait, there's the chief. Chief, did we get any information?
I think we have to actually vote to reconsider.
Oh, sorry.
Okay, wait a minute. Okay, Mr. DeFler.
Yeah, so the...
Sorry, we're out of order.
Ms. Owen is correct. Hold on, hold on a second there, chief. Because, you know, so you're going to have to have five votes to approve the motion to reconsider, and then, once it's reconsidered, then, then the motion can be brought back up for discussion. The items can, sorry.
Okay. So we have a motion to reconsider under contract C1 and C2, if I'm correct, because I took a little pause there. Okay. And so we will need five votes. So I don't know if we can do that without a roll call. Do you think we need a roll call?
I don't think so.
Okay. All in, any discussion, sorry. Let's go. Is there any discussion on her thing? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay.
Okay. Now I would like to make a motion to actually reconsider items 1 and 2.
Okay. Do we have a second on that?
No, we didn't.
I thought we did that.
No. Oh, I'm sorry. Not to reconsider.
I think we're just discussing them now.
To actually discuss.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
And, okay. I guess the motion is actually to take them off the consent agenda technically. So to take those two items off of the consent agenda and discuss them separately, which is what we would now be doing.
Okay.
So on item C1, so moved. How's that?
Okay.
Okay. So second? Do I have to say?
She needs to, Ms. Cottney needs to read them into the record now.
Okay. Testing everybody's Robert Schulman.
Thank you.
A little late, a little late in the meeting for that.
This, this would have been better earlier. Go ahead, Ms. Cottney.
Item 7C1, approve safe policy memorandum of understanding for provision of a process and method of information sharing, cooperation, and coordination between Knox County policymakers to identify and address the strategies and responses of the juvenile justice system.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Roundtree. So now the floor is open to discussion on item C1. Ms. Roundtree?
I just didn't know if, so I saw Missy saying no, but now that we're back in order, I didn't know if the chief had any additional information about the show cap to share with us.
Thank you, Mr. Producer.
Yes, ma'am. Just really, two pieces, and I felt like we knew this on Monday, but we really wanted to be certain that we were, we were accurate. To give you a little bit of scope and scale, there are 48, as of Monday, there are 48 juveniles on the show cap list. Now, I don't know if that's more or less than what you thought, but as of Monday, that is the total, 48. And there, we talked a little bit on Monday about notifications and who gets updated about show cap-related issues. And there is some state law that guides us in terms of notification of the schools when a show cap event takes place that impacts a student that is registered in their particular school. And we get some of those notifications, and the principals typically get those notifications. And so 48 total kids, and there is a notification process that is driven by juvenile court juvenile court that is mandated by, I think, probably state law.
Okay, Mr. Dupler, yes?
Yeah, I would like to echo what, what chief's talking about. I mean, that's, that's certainly the case within the juvenile law. Thirty-seven dash one, dash one thirty-one, for instance, talks about when you have a, a child that's been deemed delinquent particularly for felonies. And that's mainly, mainly what we're talking about, and things that you would, would think of, first degree, secondary murder, rape, et cetera. There, there are mandatory notification requirements. What I can say in general regarding both of these items, but particularly C-one, is that these agreements provide for increased communications and discussions among the entities listed in the MOU in conjunction with the juvenile court. So that's, that's the main purpose for these MOUs.
Thank you, Mr. Dupler. Ms. Dethridge?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know Monday Ms. Fugit had said something about this is gonna happen with or without us. This just gives us a seat at the table. But my question, who is sitting in that seat that's at the table? So that we do have input, and we do understand, and we do get data, and we do have, who, I mean, I know the-
Knox County Schools.
Yeah, from Knox County Schools.
Yes, okay. Ms. Massey, can you tell us who's sitting at our, the table for us?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. So the, the people who typically attend that meeting are myself, Chief Pedusis, Russ Oaks attends pretty regularly, and then the superintendent as well.
Okay.
Okay, so when it says that a student may miss curfew or whatever, do they really go and pull them out of class two days later? Are those, are those things really happening? And is that a part of what can happen?
When I, and I, I don't have the numbers in front of me, but when I, I've reviewed the numbers of arrests and what they've been related to at school, I can't tell you that it's never happened. I'm sure that there have been situations where if it's a student that has some serious issues, that perhaps that has happened. I don't know. I can tell you that it doesn't happen on a regular basis.
Okay, because I think that would be part of our concern.
But please understand, if there was a reason for law enforcement to make the decision to come and arrest, whether we sign that agreement or not, that's a decision that law enforcement makes.
Well, I know, because a lot of things happen outside of school-
Correct.
-which, when there's students that, you know, they can't come and get them. I just wanted to know, the curfew's kinda like, really? Could you wait till they walk out the door? So I'm just asking, who's at the table, and how much input do we really have on how this make, how this process is, is dealt with?
Right. The majority of the meeting really is focused on what are the proactive strategies that we as a community? I mean, I would hate to think we would lose our seat at that table, because I, for one, think it's a really important conversation about community safety, school safety, just making sure all of those agencies are communicating effectively. So, and I know Mr. Dupler is frequently in attendance, so I think that many of us would echo the same.
Okay, now also, if someone brought this to my attention, that Knox County is now on part of ICE, that Immigration and Customs Enforcement thing that's going on. And so that means that we are authorized as a city, or county, or whatever, and I don't know how that's gonna play into what we're doing now. So those kind of things, I hope that while you're sitting at the table, that we can bring that up and make sure that our kids are handled accordingly, and that this is not taken into, you know, out of, out of context when it comes to handling our students.
Correct. And there is, number one, there's not any kind of information about the status of students shared, period. But there is not any student information that is shared without appropriate, either a subpoena or a court order, because we can't, under FERBA, disclose information. We really talk about issues much more than would be about a specific student, unless that documentation existed, which would make that appropriate.
Okay. Thank you, Missy.
Okay, thank you. And I see one additional light, and that's Ms. Owen. Ms. Owen?
I'd like to ask Chief Pedusis, under what circumstances could a child be arrested at school? And, and are we required to tell an officer that that child is in attendance if they don't have appropriate, if they don't have a warrant?
Well, I, I can't speak to what the principal's requirements are in terms of law enforcement, but I can tell you that the practice in recent history is that any time it is deemed a safety-related issue that would rise to the level that a child needed to be removed from school, and this is even a, a point that we made in our, our draft of our MOU that we have with the sheriff's office and the police department, that before any child's removed from school, that that's done with as, as least amount of disruption to the school day as we can. And, and that's not a decision that's taken lightly. It would have to rise to the level that there's a significant reason why that child would be taken from school. And I would tell you, that reason typically is gonna be some type of serious felony where they feel like that child's a danger, and that every, every moment that that child is not in custody presents a danger to, to others. So that, that decision is not made lightly to go into a school and remove a child.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, seeing no other lights, we have a motion and a second to item C-one. So all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Item C-two, Ms. Cottney?
Seven C-two, approve inter-agency agreement for the Serious Habitual Offender Comprehensive Action Program for provision of identifying services available from respective Knox County and/or Knoxville agencies to allow the sharing of data and information where permissible and maintaining ongoing communications for more effective intervention in community problems related to juvenile. So moved.
Motion made by Ms. Owen, seconded by Ms. Horn. Any discussion on this item? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Now to public forum.
Now we're back to public forum. Okay, so our first speaker in public forum is, we had somebody that knew. So our first speaker in public forum is gonna be Persephone Webb.
Yes.
Persephone Webb?
Sorry, I thought Crystal was ahead of me in the list.
She is, but he moved his time down.
Okay.
She, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Go ahead.
My name is Persephone Webb of Knox County. I'm speaking as a representative of the Voices for Trans Youth Campaign, and I would like all those in attendance with me to please stand up that are in support of this campaign. We're here tonight to ask the board to work with us to make positive changes in our school to support and protect transgender and LGBTQ students. First, we are asking Knox County Schools to treat transgender students exactly as their cisgender or non-transgender peers, meaning that a transgender girl or boy should be treated exactly the same way as any other girl or boy, and receive the same privileges and access to gendered spaces, including bathrooms, locker rooms, sports, and clubs, and also have the preferred name and pronoun recognized and used without question. Second, we are asking the board to modify the Knox County Schools' existing anti-harassment policy J-210 to include language that specifically protects transgender, gender non-conforming, and LGBTQ, LGBTQ students from harassment, both physical and verbal, bullying, and discrimination, and for Knox County Schools to actually enforce this policy with real consequences for those that violate it. Every board member has received a model district policy as an example of what we would like to see in Knox County Schools. Our group is also ready to jump in and work directly with the board and administration to craft and implement these policies this system desperately needs to protect LGBTQ students. If this board makes the policy changes we are asking for, you will show the Knox County community that you truly care about the well-being and achievement of all students, including those who are transgender or LGBTQ. Doing the right thing isn't always easy, especially with so much negative external pressure from people who seek to demonize and oppress transgender children due to their hate or ignorance. Please do not cave to that pressure. Listen to what we are telling you. These policy changes are absolutely necessary for the health and safety of transgender and LGBTQ students. Choose to do the right thing in the face of adversity. Stand up and say to our kids and to our community, hate and intolerance have no place in Knox County Schools. Knox County Schools is committed to the well-being of all students, and we proudly stand up and protect LGBTQ youth. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Crystal Yamazaki.
Hello, my name's Crystal Yamazaki. I live in Knox County. Knox County Schools is using false and inaccurate legal statements to justify their desired anti-transgender restroom practices. Knox County Schools claims they are following Tennessee state law by restricting restroom access for transgender students. This is not true. There is no law in the state of Tennessee which requires transgender students to use the restroom that corresponds with their sex assigned at birth, nor is there any state law which prohibits transgender students from using the restroom that corresponds with their affirmed gender. KCS is segregating transgender students and denying them access to public facilities not because state law requires them to, but because they want to. Knox County Schools claims federal law gives them the legal authority to bar transgender students from gender-aligned restrooms. This is not true. Title IX protects sex discrimination in federally funded schools. The Sixth Circuit, which includes the state of Tennessee, established in Price Waterhouse v. Hopkins, that sex stereotyping constitutes sex discrimination. This applies to both cisgender and non, cisgender and transgender individuals. In Smith v. City of Salem, the Sixth Circuit ruled that adverse differential treatment of transgender individuals for gender stereotype nonconformance is no different than sex stereotyping of cisgender individuals. In Barnes v. City of Cincinnati, the Sixth Circuit ruled that transgender individuals are protected by sex discrimination laws by virtue of their gender nonconformance. In Barnes, the court ruled that sex stereotyping based on a person's gender nonconforming behavior is impermissible, impermissible discrimination irrespective of the cause of that behavior. In Highland Local School District v. U.S. Department of Education, the Sixth Circuit ruled that under Title IX, a transgender student must be treated in accordance with their affirmed gender and be permitted to use gender-aligned restrooms. KCS is barring transgender students from gender-aligned restrooms because they don't fit the stereotypes of what KCS thinks a boy or a girl should be. According to legal precedent in the Sixth Circuit, this is sex stereotyping, which is a violation of federal law under Title IX. Knox County Schools claims that the Equal Protection Clause of the Fourteenth Amendment to the U.S. Constitution permits them to segregate transgender students from their same-gender peers. This is not true. The Equal Protection Clause requires that all persons similarly situated must be treated alike and prohibits both intentional and arbitrary discrimination. In Ivancho v. Pine Richland School District, the Third Circuit ruled that barring transgender students from gender-aligned restrooms violates the Equal Protection Clause. In Whittaker v. Kenosha Unified School District, the Seventh Circuit ruled that barring transgender students from gender-aligned restrooms violates both Title IX and the Equal Protection Clause. In Whittaker, the court's unanimous ruling explicitly states that any policy that requires an individual to use a bathroom that does not conform with his or her gender identity punishes that individual for his or her gender nonconformance, which in turn violates Title IX. The court also concluded that because birth certificate laws vary between states, the sex marker on a transgender person's birth certificate is effective, effectively arbitrary, and that therefore restricting restroom access according to sex assigned at birth is a violation of transgender students' constitutional rights. Knox County Schools can no longer hide behind feigned deniability and vague unsubstantiated claims that they are acting in accordance with state and federal law. If you continue to deny transgender students access to gendered facilities, you now do so in the public eye with the incontrovertible awareness that what you are doing is not only cruel, but illegal.
Our next speaker is Nate Bradley.
I'm a little short for this. I am Nate Bradley, and I am a local. I live here. I was born in the mountains overlooking this valley, and I spend my money here. I file my taxes here. I buy produce here, and I love the Scruffy City and its aesthetic, but we have a serious issue, both in the culture at large and in our school system. I honestly don't understand how a child, let me say this again, a child, would instill fear and hatred in adults because that child happens to be transgender. Let's check the comments on any local news article detailing statements about the safety of trans children in this area. People threaten to kill and beat trans children who use the bathroom with their cis kids in broad daylight, and these statements garner massive support. Clearly, these students are at a risk for both bodily harm and discrimination, as well as virulent self-hate and suicide. The trans suicide statistic rests above forty percent. A step to healing these children is to follow what the American Psychiatric Association recommends, and treat them as their gender, since nothing else works to keep them alive, and being transgender is not a choice. Why do we have to debate the humanity of children and beg for their lives? We are all better than this. I believe in this city, and I believe in my neighbors. I think we can find a way to support these children and stop failing them, such as not forcing them into a bathroom that makes them a walking target. This would help the goals and ideals mentioned previously during this very board meeting. Children would dread school less. Children wouldn't be so afraid to use something as simple as a bathroom. They would have better grades. They would have better mental health. I'd like to now read a short statement I received from a Knox County student who happens to be transgender. "My name is Junko. I am six. Why are you treating me like this? Why are you breaking the law? Please stop. You are also treating other trans kids like this too. Why don't you stop? You should treat all trans kids the same as all other kids. Thank you."
Next speaker is Elizabeth, Elizabeth Stanfield.
Hi there. My name is Elizabeth Stanfield, and I'm a resident of Knox County. We've heard a lot of passionate testimony tonight, and I would like to talk to you about an issue that I think is of equally great importance, which is the treatment of trans students in our schools here in Knox County. So today, I will read part of an April decision from the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals about Gavin Grimm's fight for bathroom access in his schools. The court, in this statement, is talking to a different school district, but I think that there are striking similarities to the decisions that are facing you today as a school board. Gavin Grimm, then a fifteen-year-old transgender boy, addressed the Gloucester County School Board on November eleventh, two thousand fourteen, to explain why he was not a danger to other students. He explained that he had used the boys' bathroom in public places throughout Gloucester County and had never had a confrontation. He explained that he is a person worthy of dignity and privacy. He explained why it is humiliating to be segregated from the general population. He knew intuitively what the law has in recent decades acknowledged. The perpetuation of stereotypes is one of many forms of invidious discrimination. And so he helped, he hoped that his heartfelt explanation would help the powerful adults in his community come to understand what his adolescent peers already did. Gavin clearly and eloquently attested that he was not a predator, but a boy, despite the fact that he did not conform to some people's idea about who is a boy. Our country has a long and ignominious history of discriminating against our most vulnerable and powerless. We have an equally long history, however, of brave individuals, Dred Scott, Fred Kuramatsu, Linda Brown, Mildred and Richard Loving, Edie Windsor, and Jim Obergefell, to name just a few, who refused to accept quietly the injustices that were perpetuated against them. It is unsurprising, of course, that the burden of confronting and remedying injustice falls on the shoulders of the oppressed. Gavin's case is about much more than bathrooms. It's about a boy asking his school to treat him just like any other boy. It's about protecting the rights of transgender people in public spaces and not forcing them to exist on the margins. It's about governmental validation of the existence and experiences of transgender people, as well as the simple recognition of their humanity. His case is part of a larger movement that is redefining and broadening the scope of civil and human rights so that they extend to a vulnerable group that has traditionally been unrecognized, unrepresented, and unprotected. been unrecognized, unrepresented, and unprotected. Gavin's plight has shown us the inequities that arise when the government organizes society by outdated constructs like biological sex and gender. Gavin's lawsuit also has demonstrated that some entities will not protect the rights of others unless compelled to do so. Today, hatred, intolerance, and discrimination persist and are sometimes even promoted, but by challenging unjust policies rooted in invidious discrimination, Gavin Grimm takes his place among other modern-day human rights leaders who strive to ensure that one day equality will prevail, and that the core dignity of every one of our brothers and sisters is respected by lawmakers and others who wield power over their lives. This statement, like I said, is not about Knox County. It's about another school board in another place that faced a similar decision to what you face today. But it speaks to how important this decision is. And today, I, your constituent, ask you to take your elected office seriously. Over the last several months, trans students, their parents, and supportive community members have spoken to you, asking you to do something. Many of these speakers have even provided templates for you, as Persephone did today, telling you about policies that other school districts have adopted to ensure the equal treatment of trans students, and yet you have done nothing. Trans students will continue to experience abuse and degradation in our schools because of your inaction. Those students that have spoken to you over the past few months, some of them as young as thirteen years old, are brave like Gavin, and their testimonies compel you to use your power to act. Thank you.
Our final speaker this evening is Jen Patterson.
Hi, my name is Jen Patterson, and I'm a young professional here in Knoxville, and I'm also a part of the LGBTQIA community. I'll keep my statement brief, because your time is valuable, and all those who are still yet to speak in front of this board deserve adequate time to express their concerns, what they're experiencing, and how they would like you to change your policy to be able to surround and comfort and support trans individuals. But let's remove that in general. Let's talk about the fact that these are your students. We're going to first just take a little moment to visit an excerpt from Knox County School Board's Core Values and Mission from the two thousand and fourteen strategic plan. As Ms. Roundtree stated previously, to advocate excellence for all children by serving Knox County as the governing for the public education and to not close the door. Your core concepts are put people first. You say that you care about your students, families, employees, and will respect them with dignity. You are not choosing to do so by not respecting the gender that children are born with. Okay? Let's move on to pursue excellence. Exceptional teachers are the core strength of our system that provides students with the opportunity to reach their potential. They cannot reach their potential if, if the teachers are not allowing them to feel safe and comfortable in the setting in which they are sitting. Let's move on to encourage collaboration. Our schools are stronger working together as a team. Our students win when we partner effectively with families in the community. Here's part of your community. We're speaking our voice and talking and addressing specifically, partnering with you and giving you the tools. This is not time that you will be wasting to create programs. I myself am a part of a nonprofit organization, and I create programs on the daily. We have created this for you. There's no except, there's no time that you'll have to be spending or, or anything like that, so let's just take that off as well. Embrace accountability. When we are transparent and take responsibility, results the entire community wins. We have to take responsibility as a community to address our needs. As you listened for about forty-five minutes on the, on the concept of IB schools, we need to take adequate time to also assess other students that you talked about, the minority students right here are our minority, are minorities right in front of you. I myself am not transgender, and I will never know what it is like to be transgender. But my partner that I was with for four and a half years experienced it, so much so from bullying, from bullying to hatred from their family. It caused them to commit suicide. This is someone that I loved and I cared about. This is happening every single day to your students. They're feeling not accepted. They're feeling like no one loves them. They're feeling like they cannot be themselves. As a school board, you are out to set and represent all students. And this means trans students. This means lesbian students. This means gay bisexual students. This means people, students that don't even conform to a certain sexual or gender identity. This is just your students. Thank you for your time, and I hope that you'll take what our, your community is saying to you to heart. Thank you.
I have a motion to move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Norman. Meeting is adjourned.